I now call the July eighteenth, twenty twenty four Young Community School Board meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the land of United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the fiscal with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. My name is Debbie Edwards and I am the school board president. Our agenda for this meeting tonight is available on the Young Community Schools website. We receive a packet of information that summarizes agenda items a week prior to the board meeting. This allows us to read and study the material ahead of time and ask any questions of the superintendent before the meeting. Do we have any audience?
Yes, we have two. We have one for an agenda item, if you want to do that first, and then one for a non-agenda item.
Okay. Community comments that are related to an item on the posted agenda will be giving, will be given at the time the agenda item is to be discussed. Please understand that the board will not engage in discussion per policy fourteen hundred. The board values and supports the opportunity for community members to share ideas. Comments on the agenda items will be limited to five minutes per speaker and twenty minutes per topic. Any comments directed at the performance of school personnel will not be allowed. Comments that are inappropriate to an open public meeting will be immediately stopped by the board president. Community comments need to be presented in a respectful manner following proper decorum. Disruption of the meeting can result in the meeting being recessed. So that's the agenda item.
All right, we have Alin Verbal talking about ASB and activity fees.
Hey, welcome.
So first, I want to say thank you to Chris because after I read this newspaper article, I really reached out, sent you this email. And you responded Monday. We kind of went back and forth. So I just want to thank you for your response. As I indicated in my response to you, I was going to review the attached documents, which I did. And so my first point is the document that I reviewed, my understanding is it's one point seven million dollars shortfall for athletics and activities because of the levy failure to pass. And you're trying to determine which of the one, two, three scenarios that you want to think about assessing for additional fees. And when I asked you about what has been the community feedback to this as per the newspaper article, you clarified that the community feedback was taken from the May twenty twenty four community forum. And so that was one of the documents that you attached and I reviewed. And I realized it was just a list of random suggestions that weren't really collated. And so there's a lot of duplicative stuff on there. And so I didn't really know for brevity's sake, like what you were, how you kind of determine what you're going to extrapolate from that. So then I just moved on to the other document which you attached, which I appreciate, which I requested, which is, what was the number of participants last year and how that financially broke down? And that was very illuminating because it kind of went with what I thought but didn't know. Sometimes you can think things and just not know things. And it still feels like what I conveyed to you in my email that assessing scenario number three is just a different way of getting more money from a smaller amount of people. I agree that fees should probably be increased, but I actually disagree with one of the things that was in the newspaper article in your email about trying to keep the participation level at the same level as last year. And that's because as the parent of an athlete usually plays to be sports every season, I'm looking at a huge chunk of money coming out of my pocket and I'm having an exchange student coming from Spain in about a month, who also will be playing seasons every season. And that's just a lot of money. And we don't qualify for free reduced lunch. I pay full freight every time we do something. And I normally don't have a problem paying full freight. But in this instance, my experience with the athletic department at the high school has not been positive. There's a lack of transparency, ineffective communication. And I don't want to spend that amount of money for the quality or the lack thereof of what I've received in my daughter's freshman year. And truth be told, my daughter is not four A material, so put that out there. She's not. She's okay. But she's not creme de la creme. And I'm completely down with her trying out, her and Reggie trying out for these sports and not making the team. I don't have an investment in her being on the team. I think cuts do have to be made. And it might just be, as I saw in those comments that you appended to your email, that we don't have C-team sports or we don't have JV sports, that we only have varsity sports. Because my other concern is that we're now moving into four A season with this athletic season. And not only is my child definitely not four A material, I would not be offended if you, if the board decided to only do varsity sports and my child did not make the varsity team. My concern would be that she makes the varsity team and I'm on the hook for this huge chunk of money, right? So that's what I have. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Then we have one for a non-agenda.
For community comments that are from items not on the posted. The first one? Community comments that are separate from items, sorry.
You're in the right place.
Yeah. Items on the posted agenda. Please understand that the board will not engage in discussion per policy fourteen hundred. The board values and supports the opportunity for community members to share ideas. However, the non-agenda items, the board will not take action but may refer the issues to the administrator for further investigation or research. Comments on non-agenda items will be limited to three minutes per speaker and fifteen minutes per topic. Any comments directed at the performance of school personnel will not be allowed. Comments that are inappropriate to an open public meeting will be immediately stopped by the board president. Community comments need to be presented in a respectful manner following proper decorum. Disruption of the meeting beyond the open comment period can result in the meeting being recessed. So what do we have?
Tasha Johnson.
All right. Good evening. Tasha Johnson, Young High School teacher for seventeen years and current YA co-president. I apologize. I have my phone. My printer was not working this afternoon. I just want to make sure that the board, as you're hopefully very aware, is a bargaining year currently for YA and YCS. The two teams have met and were scheduled to meet several more times in the coming weeks. But there are some aspects of the contract that can't be determined and bargained until this board makes decisions. Decisions on things such as athletics, and I don't mean on pay-to-play fees or athletic usage fees. I mean, are there going to be middle school sports? Are there changes to high school sports? What about clubs and activities? What about marching band? Instructional areas such as college and the high school. Those are areas that are part of the YA contract, and yet we can't bargain the unknown. We appreciate your want for due diligence and the proper considerations, but decisions need to be made so that other processes can move forward. We're all committed to the year starting on time, the school year. But the further the decisions on these topics are pushed to later, the harder the job will be to negotiate a fair contract on time for our staff, students, and our community. And that's our concern. And so we are asking that perhaps the board consider a special meeting of some sort in the next week or two in order to make the necessary decisions so that we can all move forward bargaining, both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. School board meeting minutes. One second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, new business, individual contracts, except, oh, individual contracts.
I move we approve.
Any discussion?
This is our up-to-date, even as a couple hours before the board meeting. We're trying to wait as long as we possibly can, each board meeting, to make sure that we get every person on here that we can because positions and people's livelihood depend on boards making decisions quickly. And so apologize for the last minute updates, but that will continue even for the next couple of board meetings. We have two more that will probably be writing letters on behalf of a couple employees that are asking to be released from contracts, but aren't able to bring to the board yet. So we're trying to help the employees who are moving on to do that as quickly as they can. So just know that one of the reasons you're getting updates even an hour, two hours before the board meeting is because we're adding to this list as we get confirmation.
And the number six on that list were the recalls, right?
Yes, yep. And even as of today.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Second. Yes. See, out of district travel.
I move we approve.
One second. And discussion?
This is a pretty amazing opportunity that came to our choir teacher at the high school. I guess kind of late winter, early spring. And shared it with me and many others and was pretty quickly very excited about this possibility to go to New York and get to perform, get to also learn. They are fundraising for this trip. And it's a, it's a big task for this group, and they are up to the challenge. And I know that you might even potentially have a granddaughter that may or may not go and get to go into this opportunity. But, you know, typically we would find some ways for the district to try to help offset some of the costs. But choir director knew that last spring, but they are committed to fundraising for it. And a pretty amazing opportunity that if they're able to fundraise for it and go, we did not want to stand in the way, even given our circumstances. So this is pretty amazing and pretty unique to be invited and asked to do this. So I think it speaks volumes to our program.
And it's clear that there's no monies from us.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're fundraising.
Any other discussion?
It's, it's a great opportunity for the kids.
Yeah. We'll all have to help with the fundraising. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. So we have D, policy revision, second reading.
Twenty-four minute. Oh, go ahead and take a motion first. I move approve.
Hey, discussion?
Twenty-four oh nine P, again, you've seen this many times because we brought it to you earlier and then had to pull it because there were additional updates from OSPI. So then we brought it back to the last board meeting with those additional updates for first reading and then today a second reading and approval. Lisa, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I think just the same as before. There was a piece about disseminating data to ensure that we, I mean, that was some boilerplate was the language that was put in.
And you've all seen that. You've had that for several weeks. And so again, just, this would have come with the other policy, actually a couple of months ago now. But had to put in the additional updates.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I think we need to take these separately.
Okay, so we had a motion seconded on D, right? The first, the second reading for approval.
On twenty-four nine, all seated.
All voted. So next, it's for approval. One rate only for fifty-three-ten compensation schedules.
So for this one, you'll need to make a motion on a specific decision that you are wanting to approve. Typically, what would happen is I would bring to you a proposal. Given our circumstances, what I brought to you were actually five options. Everything ranging from three percent increase to everyone covered under fifty-three-ten, two and a half percent, and then a two percent and one and a half, and then the fifth option being nothing. And in all those options, I've asked you to not make any additions to the superintendent's salary for next year until leave it as is. So the superintendent's salary, as you see on your, the information that you've had, would not be impacted. But any decision you make would impact the rest of the positions on fifty-three-ten.
So are we going to have a motion on fifty-three-ten? That's what we're saying?
Yes, you'll have to present a motion and you'll have to vote and approve or have some discussion around it first before somebody's willing to make a motion. You wanted, after the last board meeting, you wanted more time. And so I know you've asked some additional questions. I've had a chance to meet with each of you individually to give you responses to your questions. And I think you've had individual conversations as well. So yeah, that's an opportunity for, I think, some conversation. And then depending upon where you are, we do need a motion. We would like to move forward.
So do you want to have a discussion first and then make a motion? Or would someone be willing to put out the motion?
I'm gonna discuss it first. I guess clarify, Chris. Anything we discuss right now, it's not affecting the steps per se. It's affecting the percentage increase that would be applied to those steps.
Correct. So steps remain the same. So with a year, another year of experience, a person would move up on the step. However, it does impact percentage increase for each cell.
Well, we certainly had, as mine self, I've gone back and forth and back and forth. And it's very hard when we have to be in this difficult situation. And the administrators are, we can't run the district without them. But having said that, in the climate and the fact that we're trying to make up fifteen million, I personally can't give them the, a raise, any of it. So. Oh, that's, I opened the discussion, so. That's my.
My experience comes from the private sector side of business. I know things operate a little different in the public. But when we have a year where we don't make money, where we lose money, there are often, there are no raises. There are no firings. There are no raises. I know this is different, but I have, I have a hard time feeling responsible if I'm making cuts to kids' programs on one hand and then giving raises on the other. So I know that that's not easy and that's not fun for a lot of people that like or depend on a raise. But that's where I personally put the kids first. It's like, every dollar's counting right now.
Yeah, I, I agree with both of you. To me, the kids come first. So and if some of them don't like getting raised, want to go someplace else, you know, that's something we have to chance, so.
You have anything to say?
Well, are they, are they moving up on the step?
Yes, so what I am proposing is, and that hasn't been up for discussion, but what I propose is that we allow people to move up on a year of experience because when it's all said and done.
To move up on a step.
We can't.
So they aren't moving up on the step. They just are increasing.
That's. The three, three percent, two percent.
The three percent or whatever on the step.
Exactly.
And so, I mean, as much as I don't like it, I'm, I'm just like, I lay awake at night and I think, you know, what can we do? We, I mean, this is the hand that we're dealt. And I actually, personally, I'm just really tired of saying or hearing, well, the levy didn't pass. I don't want to hear that anymore. What I want to hear is this is where we're at and this is what we're going to do. This is, so we have to deal with the hand we're dealt. And we can't, we just can't do it this year. And so next year, we'll look at it. So we can move them up on the step. That's what we can do. And let them go up on the step, but we can't add a percent to the step.
Yeah, eventually we'll have to.
We're gonna have to get them.
Any more discussion or?
I mean, that's just the best we can do.
So we don't have a written motion, so someone has to make a motion.
I move we not do the three percent or not do a percent, but we let our employees move up on this. Yep. Move up on the schedule.
You need any more? This is administration. Do you need any more than that, Debbie? You'll fill in the correct words.
Yeah, second.
Any more discussion?
I mean, not, every decision we make is not easy. And every decision we make hurts another group of people. So I appreciate the grace you've given us. It's not a fun position to be in. It's not my life earnings, not getting a raise here. So I understand that as well. But this is not fun or easy, but we have to cut fifteen million. We're cutting it a hundred, two hundred grand at a time, so it makes it that much worse.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. So next, we have E, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, E schedule. Athletics and facility use.
And I would like to split these up. With the last item, please.
Can we split up A and B? We'll do athletics first. That's A. Okay?
So we brought you this, just as a reminder, specific proposal, scenario three. You have a slide we can put out, but you've got the information in there as well that would increase high school ASB from currently, it's at fifty, would go to seventy-five. High school sports would go from fifty to two hundred. Football would go to two hundred fifty. Middle school ASB, fifty dollars. Middle school sports, one hundred dollars. And based on the information that you provided me at our last boarding, board meeting, that was the direction you wanted us to proceed with. So we then brought you that specific proposal for approval.
This is scenario three, what's up on the board.
Yeah.
And we have, we have a motion and a second, right, on this? Or we don't, no, we split it.
You have to make a motion and a second, but I was just reminding you of what specific motion you are voting on. And so this is just a snapshot of, again, on the revenue side, we need to be very clear that the revenue is based on current participation from the twenty-three, twenty-four years. So any decisions made, you know, after this around participation and programs would certainly impact that revenue. But that revenue is strictly based on the numbers from twenty-three, twenty-four. If we were to make the change, if all of those student athletes would participate and the same ones that are able to pay would pay, and the same ones that were qualifying for free and reduced lunch would not be paying. So just taking, to try to give you an apples-to-apples comparison. However, I think we all know that with an increase, like Alin said, people are going to have to make decisions around whether or not they can afford that. I do have something later on that I'll be discussing that's hopefully an opportunity to help offset any of our cut, not any, but some of our cuts in athletics and activities for our students. But we'll be talking about that later on. But the motion is specific to scenario three right now.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have a.
You guys move and approve first.
I have a question. We have to move.
If we move and approve, then we can have the discussion and then to request a modification.
Okay, so somebody move and approve, then I'll have my discretion.
I have my, I move we approve.
A second.
Okay, now discussion.
Okay, so my question is, so don't we need to decide, or I guess my question is to you guys, don't, don't we need to decide what kind of athletic programs we're going to have before we decide what kind of rate schedule we're going to have? That's just me. Because if, if we're not going to have, if we're not going to have athletic programs, you know? I don't know. I just, it's just me. I was just thinking about that.
I guess for me personally, like I prefaced earlier, none of this is fun. I've got two kids that are doing basketball, you know, young gymnastics, Perry Soccer Club, M P Y B, Twisters. Those rate fees are consistent with what we're all paying for those local programs. And as much as I like giving it for cheaper to people of the high school and middle school, I mean, with all the other cuts we have to make, I would much rather personally, and I've talked to a lot of people in town, I would much rather increase the athletic fees than if that could save some of the programs as a whole. Because I'd rather have people paid to play than get rid of the opportunity for everybody.
Okay. I just, I mean, I was just like thinking, well, if you aren't going to have a middle school program, then why, why are we talking about raising the middle school fees? So that's what I was just saying. Or if you're not going to have C-team sports, you know, what I was saying.
Start someplace.
Yeah, so I was just, I was just asking the question.
Well, the way I look at it, if we accept this, then when we do have the middle school and C-team programs, we've got the fees already set. I hate raising the price of anything, but, you know. Football, hell, that's over five hundred dollar fees.
I just thought I would ask the question because there's going to be people that are going to go, why are you raising if you're not going to have the program? Just thought I would ask the question.
But if you remember, the last couple of years, especially after COVID, we have discussed this. We never have done it, right? Okay?
I'm, yeah.
And so for these years, we've been on the low end. Okay?
Just ask him a question.
You got your answer?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I just want to ask.
If, if we weren't in the situation we were in, I wouldn't be recommending it. Maybe a little bit, a little of an increase in the wind.
But not this, yes.
Not to this extent, but we are where we are. And the majority of the kids that play high school sports have come up through either the local youth programs or more expensive select programs. So I mean, I think it's that all of this. I know it's going to hurt some people. And but I, every cut we make is hurting.
I know. It's just, it's hurting. It's hurting.
Well, then the kids that are on free and reduced, it still comes out of the district pocket. But, and Seattle raised their, theirs to what, two hundred and fifty dollars?
I just know what affects us and the surrounding and the talking to other. And we've talked to, we've all talked to many, many people, many, many coaches, many, many. I have. People from, you know, North Thurston, Homewater, to Nino. We've all done it, so.
Well, I hope that the local sports groups, T C Y F L and whoever else, if they do want teams for the C-team and middle school, they could, hopefully they would step up and help.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. So I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
So just before you jump into number two, again, as we're. So just before you jump into number two, again, as a reminder, we have a slide for this, just this. Reminder, but you've had this information for quite a while as well. We brought you a proposal that you've looked at. For several weeks, you also wanted more information and more time to consider the information, and so. What we brought to you tonight was specifically the proposal that we brought before, which would increase fees in each category. From. You know, nonprofit organizations to for-profit organizations, so there's, I believe, four different categories. The definitions for those categories would not change, we're not recommending. Any change there, but we are recommending. The documents that you have around fee schedule change, which is a significant difference. In where we've been, but also we've shared with you some of our neighbors in Bethel, Tumwater, Olympia, North Hurston, and the Rack. Again, I think probably a similar conversation to pay-to-play fees. If, if we were not in this situation, we might not be proposing. Our rate hike as high as we are, however, this is our reality right now.
Well, to me.
Do we need a, do we need a separate motion?
You do need a motion for this one, we're, they'll ask to take these as two separate items.
A separate. Somebody wanna make a?
I move to be approved.
A second.
Okay, now discussion.
Okay.
Okay, Bill.
Our, to me, our facilities are just as good as the Rack.
Yes.
And we, we are still under them.
And again. We've discussed this. When we got the middle, when we got the Southworth built and middle school built, we talked about. You know. Raising the rates. And I guess we're. Flow or whatever. There were a couple items that we had questioned. Because this is from last year, and I think it was Chris. I don't remember what it was, because we hadn't used it and we didn't have the number, but we got that put in to the fees, right? What number was it? It was Jennifer, when we, it was the first document that we looked at, and there was a zero there.
It was disinfectant.
Yeah.
We, and disinfectant replenishment.
Yes, and we were gonna add it back in.
Okay, and it's added back in, got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have a.
I don't, I, I, did that get updated on the?
We have the old.
Yes, you've got the original document. With the proposal.
But I don't, I remember we talked, we talked about it.
Yeah.
Well, I remember years ago having a discussion. That as long as it's our kids participating in the program, we're gonna keep it as low as we could.
Yes, and we did.
And we were still. That was still way under market, what I'm gonna call market price.
Yep.
So.
And we, we mentioned that when we went out for the bond for building the middle school and Southworth, and when we had the monies that, that. Committees wanted the fields done, so that we could keep the kids here. And not have them have to go to Lacey and Old Indian, Tumwater, and yet we kept the, the fees. Oh. Again.
Yeah, I wish we didn't have to do this, but. We gotta come up with it, so.
Okay, any other discussion? Questions?
Same comments I had on athletic fees, this, that's gonna cost every single kid that plays the evening sport in town. Probably an extra twenty to thirty bucks, just the numbers that I really worked out for sport. Doing myself, I was dating, right, but. What?
We don't have the money.
We don't have the money, gotta bring in the finances, we're making cuts everywhere else, so I think. Gotta do it.
And it's a, it, it's a hard. I don't know what the word is, when. We were so accustomed of the levy passing, that we didn't have to make these hard decisions. And we did it for the kids, the levy did not pass. And the voters spoke for whatever reason, and this is what. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay, sorry. F, reduced education.
So. We don't need, it's not required that you make a motion. On cuts to athletic programs. However, I've asked you for some guidance on direction of where we wanna go. So I wanna provide some information for you tonight, and we've had additional conversation. I know there's a question about where are we up to this point with cuts? So this pretty simplified version of the document tells you that we're almost at nine point two million. Between staffing and then. What we call non-employee related cuts. So here's a, a general list of where we are overall. Again, our goal being fifteen million. If we can get there, obviously that would be ideal. If we can get close. That's okay, but it just means that we're making additional cuts later on, and as you're gonna see after Jennifer. Does the finance presentation later in our time together, you're gonna see that. You know, we're not even close to out of the woods. The next slide. Is not an exhaustive list, but these are all things that. We are still considering and working through and. Still yet to be determined. And so there are a lot of things. That have to be decided, but are also based on other decisions, and so. There is a sequence in decision-making, because there's often a relationship between one decision and how that impacts. Our ability to make another. And so what I've been asking for from you is some guidance on athletics and activities, particularly. Around middle school sports and high school sports. And have provided you with quite a bit of data, and rightfully so, you asked for. More time to, to look at that data and ask questions and gather more information, and so. What I'm looking for from you is some guidance on. Where you would like to see us go, and then my goal is after tonight for us to move. And so I think it is important that we make a decision, we do have to move forward. And again, I think there are other decisions to be made that. This decision impacts.
So. As, as we get deeper and deeper in the making cuts, they get more and more difficult, right? I'm willing to definitely start talking on athletics and if you've got some ideas, but. What I've been wanting is this list exactly, but with potential dollar values associated with it. That helps us to understand how many paths we may have to get to fifteen million before cutting. All middle school sports or all C team sports. Cause right now I still feel like doing it's a little bit blindly without having all of that data. And is that, is that something that we'll be seeing today?
Not dollar amounts here, because like I said, many of these things rely on previous decisions that have to be made. And many of these decisions rely on what happens at the bargaining table, and we have three groups that we're meeting with. And so there are implications there that we won't know until we're done bargaining.
So if we make decisions on certain athletic programs over the next month. And then we find out. We can't get there, can we go back? Or likewise, if we make too big a cuts that we'd like to make to athletic programs, and then we find out at the end of day, there were other ways to get there that we weren't aware of at the time. Are we able to go back and reopen those for discussion? So that's my opinion.
I would, I would, number one. Based on the potential cuts that you have in front of you around athletics. We could cut all sports and that wouldn't be too big of a cut financially for what we have to make up. Just being completely transparent with you. I don't think that's a good idea. Because I think that we know the value of athletics now. At what level, that's a decision we have to make, so. Having said that, knowing what the cost savings would be if we were to cut athletics altogether. We don't make up that, that one point seven completely, but we get. Close, so we've got a wide gap and the number of things that we're gonna be able to save on. We're continuing to look at every single thing. And as Jennifer will talk about a little bit more, to show you a more complete picture of what that. Gap's gonna look like over the next couple of years. But many of these things are things that we're doing internally that are not. Necessarily board type decisions.
Can I ask a question on this list? So on that, it says reduced non-essential expenses, okay, shirts appreciation gifts, et cetera. Is that? District, oops, sorry, district-wide? Does that include, does the district office, does it include each building?
We're looking at the entire.
Everything.
Yep.
Okay.
We're looking at. Reducing or eliminating non-essential expenses across the entire district.
So it's not on there, but for instance, if we reducing. We were cutting administration, we're all this type of a thing, and it says travel, now. The travel and us going to a conference, say as the school board. Is that being looked at into one of these? I don't know the number, I don't know the amount that it costs. For the five board members and a superintendent to go to. A conference. And they say that we have all this money in the school board's.
Budget.
Budget, and we know what comes out of the school board budget. And I think this is as good a time as any is to say. As important as it is to go to a conference because of the learning, and we have. Two new board members. That's something that, you know, I know it's not a million dollars, okay, we don't go to Hawaii. But if it's a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand, is that in the essential? Reduced non-essential, or is that a separate item?
That would be a, a conversation that you as a board would need to decide. If you're asking my opinion, my recommendation would be we don't go. It's in spoke.
Well, might as well be upfront right now, and we don't, like, do we need a motion on it? Does it, it's something?
No.
It's discussed that is, as. I think it's really important. And having a superintendent for one year, two new board members, but we can't do it. We, we can't even have a hamburger.
My recommendation would be that, that.
Okay.
That would fall under non-essential.
Okay, that's where I was, I didn't put it.
I, I have a question. So we have athletics and activities, what are reductions, what are the activities that are? Because we've taught, we're talking about athletics, but what activities are in there in that group?
So many of those, we're still having ongoing conversations that involve our middle and high schools, some of those have collective bargaining ramifications. Our coaches are one of the contracts that we're negotiating with, and so. Those are continued conversations as well of. Where are we gonna cut? Because with each of those, there's also collective bargaining agreement. Agreements for stipends, and so those are conversations that we still have to have, but. You know, really the main thing for you guys is the athletic piece, that we need some direction, because. In, in some communities, it might not be as big of a deal, but in our community, it's a very big deal, and that's why I've essentially asked for. Your input on this specific piece.
Well, I can give you my opinion.
No, fine.
Personally, I think kids learn a lot in athletics, a lot of real life skills, real life lessons. That they don't necessarily always learn in a classroom. Not taking away from what they learn in the classroom, but getting rid of athletics wholesale, or the majority of it, I think is. A little bit irresponsible to the kids if we can do something else. That being said, I know we have to make some cuts. In talking to a lot of people in town, I think there are cuts we can't make. I think personally, this is my, you know, this is. What I feel, I think C team sports, I would see cut before I would cut middle school sports. I think there's certain middle school sports that can be cut, I think C team across the board, the middle school can be cut as well. If there are things we can do to combine the two middle schools, I know that's a travel issue as far as sports goes, but. Where I am at this point not really willing to waiver is on wholesale cuts to middle school sports. I think I'm willing to waiver in other areas, but I don't personally think the regulations are set up. To take and keep the kids going from sixth grade to high school. And middle school sports aren't as expensive than in football, football's very expensive, I think there is a youth program. That can take the place of middle school football. And save a bunch of savings there, but other sports that are in the middle schools, I would have a hard time responsibly saving.
I have a question, but if we, we'll just say, middle school sports. We have to cut all. We can't, because of Title IX, correct? We can't say just what you said, we'll cut football because there's opportunities for. TCY, you know, the other leagues, and we leave the rest. That's, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, so we would have to look at it, Lisa is actually gonna be talking Title IX here in a little bit. We would have to look at it to make some decisions if we're talking about all card choosing. It just so happens that middle school boy, male participation is lower than female, and at the high school, we have the opposite challenge. And so you don't need to worry about that, but that's something that we'll take care of as far as the Title IX piece, we're already out of compliance. And need to work towards compliance, however. We will be doing some work once we have some feedback from you, and for example, what I'm hearing. From Casey is C team sports, high school and middle school. I also heard the idea of maybe combining the two middle school programs possibly, and I also heard. Possibility of cutting middle school football, because you feel like we've got mechanism in place to serve. Middle schoolers in football in our community. So those are the kinds of things I'm looking for.
So. Is that the same mechanism for junior varsity sports, football in the high school? Is that still in play with junior varsity? They have a, a, I, I call it. Non-high school league or out, what do you call it?
No, you have to keep, I think you have to keep. You have to keep your junior varsity program and your varsity program in the high schools, I think. I think that's a place.
That's for all sports you're talking?
Yes, I, because I think that's a place where. Your kids that aren't necessarily ready to move up to varsity, that's a place where a coach has, coach has a chance. To work with those kids. And build their skills and get them ready to go to varsity, and, and I agree with Casey, there's, there's. Opportunities for kids. In athletics. That are important for kids, and there's so many things that we have to cut. And I just, I'm not really willing to cut, cut all the sports for them, I mean, it just really is killing me, because. I know that when the kids don't have things to do. They don't have a hook for school, they're going somewhere else, and I am not in favor of some of those places that. They don't have a hook for school, they're going somewhere else and I am not in favor of some of those places they're using to go.
So the question is, is that the um? Is um? What is the word where you um only have so many uh kids?
Roster.
Is is can the roster or is that a coach negotiated uh? You know, type of a thing, are they, could we, do we have?
Control over the roster?
Yes.
Uh yeah, there's language, there's language in the collective bargaining agreement around. Um when you get another coach and at what rate, uh at what point and so. Um there would have to be conversations at the high school around staying within the guidance and that document that you have. That gives you all the costs, it also on the far right gives you the number of coaches allocated. So that's where we would stay within that allocation uh of coaches.
So with the roster. Um and there's been talk, and I don't know this or not, when you talk to people, you hear both sides of. Little things that you don't know if it's true or not, that we were over uh the roster limit. For lack of better words, that we had. Um I know in the olden days, they used to um try out and they would um if you didn't make it because there was. Uh a number in that that spot. You know, there was a limited number. Now, are, is bargaining saying that um we can't do that? Is that a a thing with bargaining? I mean, if we can't, I guess where I'm going is that. We have to cut and all of that money comes out of the levy. And again, by them not thinking sports or not thinking the levy was important. We're sitting up here having to make tough decisions. If we cut. Um junior varsity. That's, you know, you don't want it, you don't want it. If we keep junior varsity, is there some way to have the roster? So that all these kids, again, we're limiting the number of kids that can play. Are you guys okay with that or is it going to be, because I remember the statement after COVID. With the number of kids that went and tried out and we had the numbers for middle school. And both middle schools, we had the numbers for high school. And it just was a lot of kids, which is a good thing, I'm not saying, but there was a lot of kids that turned out for sports. Because they had been without connection with humans for that period of time.
We would, we would work with the collective bargaining agreement with coaches to stay within their cut list. Any of our sports um require cuts, some of our sports don't. And there's no, in some cases, no added cost for additional athletes. Um and in some cases there is, and so we would work with our coaches on making sure we stay within. Um the collective bargaining agreement language and that also we're not increasing costs overall, so that's something that. That we would work with them on and uh then that's on an individual sport basis, it depends on the sport.
If I remember correctly, last year we had like a hundred freshman turnout for the C team. Now, years ago when the grandson was in middle school. He was one of the few kids that played T C Y F L and middle school football both years. So T C Y F L does have. Spots, middle school kids, freshmen, I don't believe they, they have a. League for that age group.
The other thing is Debbie, I think if you don't have varsity sports. Then I don't think you, then you need to have varsity because I think.
You don't have junior varsity.
I mean, if you don't have junior varsity, then you may as well not have varsity because they really need. I do think they work, they work together.
And in the hopes that this is only gonna be one year.
I do too, but if you don't do that, I mean, here we are moving up to another league. And then you just are gonna, so say you have a basket, your basketball program, you can't have just. Those kids that are on the varsity bench and that's it. And then you have, you have no one coming up, you know? So you just have.
I know we're discussing this.
I know, so I'm just like, no, we have to have a program. And then I'm like sitting here going, okay, well, maybe we cannot do this, and then I listen to Casey and I'm like, okay. You know, how are we, we have, it's.
I think there are some groups that have a travel team where they don't take all the kids.
And that was another thing, is that a, is that a, um I think I brought it up before. And okay, for football, the varsity plays and then the junior, is there any way in other sports that don't um have that number of? Kids playing, could they sort of combine the junior varsity and varsity um and uh? Basketball?
They go together.
They go together, so basketball goes together and some of the other sports that. But the bus only holds seventy people.
Well, like the boys will go if the boys go, the girls are at home. And then they.
I I get that, but I'm just saying.
They go together.
Junior varsity and varsity on most sports do go together.
Well, they, if they were playing, but usually the boys are playing.
Well, that's a schedule, but I know, but that's not something that we have. Control over because in the league, do they set those that the junior varsity plays one night?
Yeah.
And the varsity plays the other night?
It all depends on the sport, it all depends on facilities.
Thank you.
Every sport has its own unique needs as far as court, field. Um whatever that may be, and so it's entirely dependent upon um space. And the specific sport, and so that's determined typically by, for example, you don't typically have. Uh enough football fields to run varsity, JV and C team all on the same day or night. Um and so that's usually why, you know, varsity is on a Friday or Saturday. And then um C team and and JV are typically um a different day in the week.
So some of the sports like uh volleyball. Um so they play, the junior varsity plays first on an away game and then the varsity plays?
Yes, oftentimes that's with basketball, with.
So our sports, we can, we already do that.
And where we can, we are gonna try to be efficient, again, that's not something. Um I expect or need you guys to worry about, that that's something we're gonna be working on. Creating efficiencies within the current system we have. But again, where I need your guidance is on specific programs. Um as it relates to our athletics and so far I've heard three things. And I shared the the three that Casey brought up that were specific around um reduction or elimination of of programs. That's the kind of input I need because the other things, we're gonna be working on those. And we're gonna try to find efficiencies and savings wherever we possibly can.
Transportation is sort of another item that we haven't discussed yet.
Right, well, and that's, that's when you're out talking to people or you get phone calls. These are the kind of questions that they wanna know, is there some saving in them being transported together? You know, and or get their own transportation, you know, that type of a thing, so.
Yep, there was, I mean, there was a. A scenario shown at some point. On one of these sheets that showed how much money we spend in transportation, right?
Oh yeah, it's astronomical.
So that would certainly be an area where you can weigh in on whether or not we're gonna provide transportation at any particular level. Of athletics and then from there, what we would do is work on. Um is it feasible to maintain the program without district provided transportation? Could we work with families on um transportation? Would our uh insurance provider allow it? Um those kinds of things.
Shouldn't, shouldn't we know the answers to those questions before we vote on whether or not we wanna cut it?
If you want us to pursue that some more, um we are happy to do that.
I would, I guess.
Yes, because here, yes, the 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 transportation, where did that go?
I would say yes.
But anyway, the transportation, uh and I remember um. Uh this last school year that it cost us because we didn't have the transportation, twelve hundred dollars to. And maybe when I looked at the vouchers, I don't really remember where it came from. To transport the kids from middle school to Ridgeline or vice versa. And I mean, I just couldn't believe it, I know that that was last budget. That was, you know, budgeted last year, that we would, we don't have that money this time, so.
We have to depend a lot on uh charters.
Yes, I know that.
Particularly at the high school uh level this past year due to driver shortages. We can't do that next year regardless, we do have um. Uh nearly a full crew as far as drivers and so. Um our goal would be any transportation for athletics and activities would have to either run through. Um our transportation um or we wouldn't be able to do it because it is a lot more expensive to do the charters versus. Uh transportation in-house.
I think maybe all the transportation through the games with the. We're, we're gonna have to go to our insurer and say what's gonna happen if. Yeah, so that was your problem with kids.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Um I have one. I mean, at some point, this is really wishful thinking, but based on my knowledge of the people in this community, I feel like at some point. We may have sponsors standing up to try to help. Save some of these athletic costs that may come, whether that's hanging managerships fields or doing something. So I guess, is there a mechanism for that to be possible should that start occurring?
Yeah, and I've got um something I'm gonna be sharing later on that. Um I think maybe an opportunity for our community to invest in um. Specifically our students in in athletics and activities. Um and I was approached today by one of our um financial, or not today, yesterday, we met. Uh one of our financial, financial institutions in the community that would like to um step up and propose a program. So I'll be sharing that, but um. The other thing that we will look at and and again, what I'm hearing so far is around C team at um. At both levels, middle school and high school. Um we will also take a look at um. Kind of the the JV participation at the middle school. And see just as far as numbers go because we have typically had uh large numbers of of students turning out and so. Um that will entirely depend on whether or not there's an increased cost to us for that, depending upon the sport. Or not, so we'll be managing that as well. Um unless I hear from you that um there's other thoughts around uh eliminate other programs.
After we put the turf down at the high school. And after, um there's always been talk about advertisement. And this old board, we had that discussion. And you might, you know, give Brian a call because we had a list of big sponsors that um. Wanted to. You know, advertise there. And we talked about the policy and we talked about it and um at that time. Um we didn't do it, we didn't, we didn't want, you know, it was to pay for the uh board, so. Brian might have some on that as far as, you know, the list because with a big sponsor like Verizon, okay? And what they wanted from that and then like the uh community sponsors. If it was five hundred or whatever, we, we went through a whole, a whole list of, you know.
Based on the feedback from you at the uh one of the board meetings at Ridgeline, we are gonna be bringing a proposal and there is policy language that exists already. Um so we're gonna be bringing that concept to you, we are not factoring that in here because we have no idea. Uh what the revenue would bring there, however, we are gonna be bringing um that idea forward. Um because I did hear from a a couple of you that there is interest in us moving forward with sponsorships. Um at our fields or gyms and things like that, so we will be bringing that to you.
And I might have gotten an email from some big whatever, you know, Pepsi or Verizon or whatever, so, okay.
Well, it seems to me during that discussion, we said. Pretty much we would be in favor of that, but we're not changing the name of the building and things like that.
Yeah, we're talking sponsorships, not uh naming rights.
On the previous page, there was a deal through and teacher refresh.
Technology.
Okay.
Uh Chromebooks.
Okay.
Yeah, so I've talked to you about that, that we're gonna forego uh the refresh that we do for. Um all students going from fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth. And then we also have a cycle that we do with staff, so uh we're gonna forego that and um. Uh we'll just make sure that um their. Uh Chromebooks are in good working condition and we'll do any repairs we can in-house, but. Um that would be something, again, next year, we'll look at how we're doing as it relates to. Um hardware and that could be another uh look at twenty-five and twenty-six. Uh for savings there as well.
Um. So do you have what you need or do we need to do more?
I've got uh your thoughts and ideas and so uh what I am hearing definitively. Um at least unless I'm hearing any argument from that is that um. We would like to uh eliminate C team um across the board, uh elementary and. Our, sorry, middle school and high school and I'm also hearing. Um that there's an interest in us taking a look at uh middle school football. Um we'll do that in relation to Title IX and see how that impacts Title IX and um. That's not uncommon, uh most districts are, in Thurston County are going away from middle school football with the exception of Tumwater still has it. Um it's just getting harder and harder for them to stay within um the requirements. Um as far as uh days you can have contact, number of days you can have practice. Um games and all of that, trying to do two programs when you've got kids participating in both. So I think it's wise for us to look at middle school football anyways. Um so what I'm hearing from you guys is uh C team in both and for us to take a. A very specific look at uh middle school football.
Some more information on the transportation.
Yep. And whether or not that would be possible at any level. Yep.
Do we know, do we have the um, uh we don't have a representative from the high school or the eth, and do we have um?
Yes, Natasha, we're here.
Well, to know the um, we already have the um. Schedule for next uh fall in place for um.
For fall sports, yes.
For fall sports and so we know how many away games and that um.
Typically half.
Huh?
Typically half of the entire uh schedule for each season, half home, half away.
Right. What it would cost to, for transportation, I know we're in a different league. You know, and the amount of money and even if we had a rough estimate as what it's gonna cost us to go to wherever.
We can figure that out uh with our transportation department.
Cause that'd be part of the transportation, because isn't it um correct that? Uh middle school in this new league, they only have two other middle schools. In the league that play, but.
No. Uh middle school is the same league they've been in.
Yeah.
They're, they're not changing, it's just the high school, it's going to the far end.
Okay, but are there only uh two other?
No, I believe there is uh seven or eight total.
Yeah, there's.
Those are different league, I know that, but then why did seven?
That has not changed.
Okay, change.
Middle school participation as far as league is, is not changed.
So the middle school has more than six, two, six, okay, six, 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 got it.
Yes. Six.
Thank you. Yeah, I just give misinformation, that's what I was, oh.
That's right, we're here to help.
Yeah, the high school schedule is on GoFundMe.
Yes, it's, course schedule, course board schedules are on that.
Got it.
Um, okay, I have what I need, thank you. I appreciate the the time and and um. Your help in looking at that, it's not easy, uh we all know the value here, but we also know. In order to make up this deficit, everything in our district is gonna be impacted in some way.
Okay, we're on to G. Yeah, okay. G, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, international cooperative agreement with uh. G, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, international cooperation agreement with uh P D S O E S V.
I think we approve.
I second.
Um this is uh so we can provide services. Uh this happens to do with uh with uh special education specifically. And I believe it's for four students that we receive uh not only training, but support and services uh for programs.
But we do this every year.
Yes, yeah, this is yearly.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Wow. Uh vouchers and payroll. Are we approved?
I second.
And do we have Jennifer?
Yes, Board Member Henderson and I went through the vouchers before the meeting and I recommend approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Facilities report.
I will be approved.
Acceptance. Okay, discussion. Mr. Hanson.
Okay, your uh your fourth pack of this month contains this past month's public works or weekly public works project. One thing I want to bring up which surprised us back in May. When we put Lackamas together back in, we spoke about six oh five oh six. Uh in May, we found an abandoned septic tank in a sinkhole. So it got fixed. That's what the drain problem is there.
Okay.
We did find an abandoned septic and it was starting to cave in, but uh anyway, got it fixed, repaired, everything's looking good there, so.
Well, thank goodness nobody fell in it.
Right next to it, little hole about that big start out.
Wow.
Just amazing. Glad nobody, there's nobody here, nobody here, but uh anyway, uh just here to answer any questions and recommend approval.
Any questions? Discussion?
How's the roof going at the high school?
There are probably seventy, seventy-five percent. The, on the three hundred building, it's it's got like a PVC white roof up there, membrane roof. That's all a hundred percent. The shingles are all the way done on probably eighty percent of the three hundred building, auto shop's done. They've got all hot mop gutters. I call them hot mop gutters, with the troughs with the membrane gutter material. It's not aluminum gutter on it, but they're all built in, but those have to be done yet. And the walkway between three hundred and the gym is still not completed, but hopefully it'll be done most of it, you know, this week, next week, probably. They gotta get off the roof by noon or twelve, thirty or so. It's too hot, it just tears them up.
And after you approve this, we're actually gonna keep Chris here and he's gonna go right into summer projects, so I'll give you an update on all of them.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Thank you, Chris. Okay.
Yeah.
Capital projects update.
Okay, um couple of things we got going on here. Uh part of House Bill twelve fifty-seven, which is energy efficient buildings. Um our high school is still five plus points out of efficiency. Where we're, there's a tiered, tier one, tier two grading and um we're just trying to be as efficient as possible. So we can be within uh the allowable limits by, I think Governor Inslee put some together for this twelve fifty-seven, so. We redid all the commons lighting, which these lights come on actually roughly about five in the morning, the service gets there and they're on till eleven o'clock at night. Um we changed fifty-three of the big cluster ceiling lights, uh four wall sconces and I call them beehive lights, the little clusters that look like a beehive up there, but uh our savings was pretty, pretty amazing. Twenty dollars and forty-two cents a day is what I estimated on just a non-graduated schedule through P S E's website. Uh it will probably be a little more depending on the time of day and the, you know, the inrush phase. So a little over a hundred bucks a week, you know, four hundred a month, you average that out into a academic year, you're probably thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven hundred dollars a year in savings. So that's one thing we've got done. Um the next three projects, uh C T E, um picked up the the tab on these. We are getting a new alignment rack in the auto shop for that program. I call it the old greenhouse. It's a green sheet metal building we put up. Oh, it used to have power inside. We did not upgrade it and we tore the old greenhouse down. We just put the metal shed up, so we did add um a service to that building. Service, the source from the three hundred building was already there, we just had to add the panel and do the LED lighting upgrades. I don't know the gentleman that teaches in uh the old robotic robotics classroom, but we added services out there underneath the the covered area by the art room so they can have classes outside there, do some training out there, um some charity had asked for. Uh we talked a little bit about the three hundred roof and the auto shop, it's moved right along. Young High School bus loop's gonna be completely refigured. They began that project today. Um the parking lots locked off. Two gates are locked, one area is barricaded. They're going to go in and clean it tomorrow and seal coat. As it drives, they're gonna re-strike to a new configuration similar to what we had back in oh five and four. Um went worked with the transportation department and an engineer to do the drawings and I think we're gonna have thirty-two stalls or buses there. So hopefully they're gonna eliminate the transfer between the middle schools and the high schools. Fort Stevens, Mill Pond and Ridgeline, all our parking lots need some help, but we just picked the select few we can do. And the all, most of this stuff has been on the capital facilities plan for years, but uh we did get in and get the large cracks repaired at Ridgeline and Lackamas and the ones at Mill Pond too, and then we're gonna go through and seal coat and re-strike all of those. And that's gonna be, the high school starts tomorrow and the other three schools will be in August. Um I don't know if you've driven by Fort Stevens lately, but the Booster Club uh picked up most of the tab for a brand new walking track. We've always had a center track out there and the Booster Club, that way that can bar and paid for a big chunk of that and I think Lisa had some money to cover the rest of it, but nice, nice walking track. You know, our office is right next to it. We see a lot of people using it, a lot of people. Let's see, reader boards. Um they are on schedule to be installed at Fort Stevens, Mill Pond, Ridgeline and Lackamas. The one in Lackamas actually um had a fire. It was the day we had an electrical storm. There's a big black spot right in the middle of it. So it's disabled right now. Ridgeline's disabled because they quit communicating back and forth. Mill Pond and Fort Stevens have the old light at once where you gotta go out and change the numbers or the letters. Um so all four schools are slated for upgrades. We did find out from the vendor, I think it was Friday last week, that we might have a little electrical concerns I'm working on right now. Uh they require a little more power than our old source, but you know, I think we can get through pretty easily. McKenna, um we're put, we've got a preschool at McKenna starting in in this fall, so we're putting a small fenced area in for preschools so they can keep track of the little ones so we don't get them running away and going down the hill and and rolling down the hill, I guess.
Nope, you had a fence back there.
There is, but it's a big area, so they're trying to contain the smaller areas. It's like, I think the size is roughly twenty-five by forty, we're fencing in. Pulled the dirt out, we did all that in-house, pulled the soil out and we're gonna have wood chips put in and a fence. It's a long-hilled roll. I'd love it if it was a little kid, it'd be fun. As you can see, we're trying to hit all the schools pretty much. Uh transportation, our tenant improvement is scheduled to bid in September. So far, we're on schedule with that. Uh the Southworth coverage play shed is kinda giving me some grief and permitting right now in Thurston County, so that will not be ready for this beginning of school year.
Why? Because it go first?
Uh no, it's just all new people in the planning department. It's a long story. You got an hour or so, we'll we'll discuss it one of these days. And our maintenance department, uh I don't know if you guys remember, two years ago, we had about a hundred and twenty-some TVs, a hundred and twenty-five. We finished this week installing the last of the ones that were allocated for classrooms at Ridgeline and high school. We've done, since school got out, forty of the forty-seven televisions have been installed. And I think uh there's seven or six or seven left in there uh for whatever, a certain classroom that may need them or if we, I don't know if Jonathan's got them saved for if one fails. I mean, you buy that many TVs, you do have some warranty issues sometimes. It's been a busy summer and still is busy, but it's been fun.
Good, sounds good.
Well, I'd like to say like the asphalt rash repair, you've got to do that. Otherwise, we're gonna be re-asphalting the whole our parking lot.
Certain areas, uh uh Mill Pond, Ridgeline and Lackamas, we had gaps to two and a half inches wide. Uh where the earth just opened up, so they went in and ground it and then put new asphalt in, sealed it. Now we're gonna go and seal coat and stripe.
So that looks so much better when you get that.
Yeah.
And seal it in, so.
Good.
Any questions?
Any questions for Chris?
And by the way, this is the first year that we didn't have any leaks at the high school.
Yeah.
In the one hundred, two hundred building.
Well, it's not been rated.
Yes.
Thank you.
Question for you, Superintendent, was just to clarify, the
Yeah.
Capital Projects Fund is, none of that is getting funded for that, it's grounded separate.
Correct. It's all capital projects dollars.
Oh. Okay, um. Okay. Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Title IX report.
Right, we're gonna have uh.
Well, did we not vote on facilities? Yes, we did.
Yeah, we did. The capital projects update, we didn't.
But that's the information.
Yeah, you did, you did number six and then number seven's information. And Lisa's gonna share, actually she's got uh number eight and number nine, so we'll have her come up and uh share a little bit about both of those that we have to do uh each year.
She's gonna do the Title IX report?
Yeah. Yeah, and number eight and number nine on your agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to present the annual Title IX report and the board policy thirty-two oh five, which is prohibiting sexual harassment of students. Uh you've received written copies of both of these reports, so I'll provide an overview here. Title IX is the federal law that prohibits sex-based discrimination in educational programs that receive federal aid. Our district follows an annual process to assess compliance with Title IX in our secondary sports programs. This involves continuous data collection in each season, data analysis and reporting. The Title IX team met on June eleventh and we reviewed the school-level sports team data and we identified discrepancies between boys and girls athletic programs. Every year, we look at three required areas. The equitable participation opportunities, equal benefits in treatment and equitable app application of outside funding sources. And to establish compliance, all three secondary schools, so both middle schools and the high school are required to meet compliance in the same area. There are three criterion they have to meet under at least one. The first one is called substantial proportionality. Simply means that sports participation should closely match school enrollment. The second way you can meet is through a history of uh program expansion. And this means that the district demonstrates it has effectively expanded sports programs for an underrepresented sex. And then criterion three is the accommodation of interests and abilities. And to meet under criterion three, the district has to demonstrate that it's effectively accommodating the underrepresented sex's interests and abilities through a survey. And this survey is administered once every three years and in our district, the last survey was given in January of twenty twenty-three. So our review of the Title IX data in June showed disproportionality in the area of equitable participation opportunities. And so as Chris shared earlier, to summarize, and you read all the detail of this in your reports. Um we have disproportionality uh with girls at the high school and with boys at the middle school. We've closed the gap a little bit at Yount Middle School, but we've increased the gap at uh at RMS and at Y H S. So moving forward, what we have planned is on September fourth, we have a strategic planning meeting set up um to, we're gonna bring together Chris, myself, athletic director, all the secondary principals, assistants. And we're going to um talk about, we're gonna take a look at this board report, we're gonna look at last year's sports recruitment efforts. We're gonna talk about potential levy impacts, develop a strategic recruitment plan for twenty-four, twenty-five, set up check-ins and schedule dates for facilities and storage walkthroughs. So with that, thank you as we continue our efforts to achieve and maintain Title IX compliance. May I answer any questions about Title IX?
So in the high school, we have more boys participating than girls?
That's right. Our wonderful football program
Yes.
drives up male members. It's a beautiful problem to have, you know, we we don't wanna take anything away from that program. There have been some pretty strong expansion efforts for girls and they just haven't gotten the traction that we're hoping for. Um though Rob feels pretty strongly that we will, like girls play football, he sees that taking off, uh but very definitely efforts are being made. Um they just haven't, uh we just simply didn't have the girls' participation that we would have, would have hoped for. So for example, um flag football was added, a powerlifting opportunity was added for girls. Bad men, uh there was a meeting for bad men, but no girls came. Um and there was a meeting at Yale Gymnastics to, that was one of the um sports that girls expressed an interest in, but no one came. So um we need to continue working in, you know, in this area for sure. And then at the middle school, um it's really around football. Uh RMS had some boys who turned out, but they didn't have enough kids to field the team. Uh Y M S did and a few of the RMS boys went over to Y M S. Um so we have work to do.
But um the, isn't that sort of a common uh throughout schools with the uh football and you have a good program? Like you say, we should, you know, have to have that problem for years. We didn't have that problem, but it it is sort of common around.
It's very common and and Rob and I talk about this a lot. And so he talks with all of the other directors in the league and we're not unique in this. That doesn't mean we don't wanna continue working. We absolutely will, uh but yes, it goes beyond us.
Didn't we talk about somewhere along the line about girls pickleball or something? Because we have the pickleball courts now and but we didn't, we didn't have it done when we looked at it and when we were coming up with other interests.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will definitely be on the table. And again, our goal moving forward is to be as absolutely strategic as we can. That's why we're having a meeting in September. We're gonna schedule check-ins at every sports season, so we're looking at proportionality all along the way. Um so we're really kinda doing everything we can to get after this. And then also, we're gonna need to see what are the impacts of of levy and really monitor that and make sure that we maintain parity in those circumstances.
Last year, I remember thinking, we got a grant from the Seahawks to do girls' flag. Was that just for last year or is that on a continuum this year?
Just for last year.
And I'm glad to see that next month, we're gonna have a free sports physical clinic at the high school.
Thanks, Lisa. Okay.
You're up next. Okay, I'll shift to uh our report on policy thirty-two oh five, um prohibiting the sexual harassment of students. So the team uh met on June eighteenth and we reviewed the use and efficacy of this policy like we do every year. And so we started by discussing the seven reported incidents of sexual harassment that were investigated in our district this year. Uh there was one at Southworth, three at Fort Stevens, two at Lackamas and one at Young Middle School. And in addition to reviewing the reported incidents, which primarily were inappropriate touching and profane and harassing behavior, uh we focused on the required areas of notice and training. And so these areas of the policy refer to the district's requirement to notify students, employees and others about sexual harassment and to provide professional development for staff. So we identified that there are sexual harassment prevention posters installed in all the restrooms. Um we have student reps that sit on this uh team and it was a student rep who suggested this last year. We've had posters, um but she pointed out that there are public spaces where students may not feel comfortable accessing them. And then if we put them on the restroom stalls or in the bathrooms, that was a more discreet area. So it was neat because this year, student rep said, I think that's working. So um I think again, it's the power of including students and asking them about uh their experience. In addition to the posters. In addition to the posters, um, we added sexual harassment training, a twenty-five-minute training to the What Every Employee Needs to Know kind of digital series that we do. Um, and then we had one, uh, assistant principal, Kaya Burgess, who attended the required Title IX investigator training, um, which is a, a requirement for all, um, principals. And then last, um, the policy is included in all of our staff handbooks, Terry updates that every year we talk, we determine if there are any changes, and she makes the updates. Um, so moving forward, we will also continue to use the Guardian Case Management software that we implemented, uh, in the spring. And the purpose of that is to provide accurate timing of reporting and to automate the recording system, um, so that things don't slip through the cracks. And at the end of the day, ensuring that we have a harassment-free environment for our students is our top priority. May I answer any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay.
We're at board comments. Oh, I thought we were gonna, okay, board comments.
No, number ten, financial reports.
Don't skip me, Debbie.
We have a riveting. Thank you, Jennifer, I'm sorry, I was.
Oh, no.
Crossed out. Financial reports, welcome.
I have some slides that.
Riveting. Consider riveting.
I don't think so. Riveting?
Thank you.
Yes.
So I wanted to give updates, um, to say, to show where we're at in twenty-three, twenty-four, um, I haven't given a fund balance update projected since March, I believe it was. Um, there haven't been a lot of changes, but at least I wanted to give an update. Um, so, this slide just shows our, our budget versus actual, um, the budget that we adopted last August for this year. We budgeted a ending fund balance, um, of four point nine million. And that included a deficit of one point two million, which we talked about a little bit, um, under our minimum fund balance policy. And then our current projection, um, that was updated as of June, the end of June, um, transactions is, um, I'm using a range because it's projected ending. We still have a couple months to go, um, so just to be safe, I'm saying four point four to four point nine, I'm hoping we're on the higher end of that when we end the year, so, um, staying pretty steady there. And the next slide is, um, the chart that you get in your packet every month. Um, but I just, I just wanted to show this, um, to go over kind of where we're at and, and the track that you see there, um, you see the blue line on the bottom is the current year, and we're closer, we, we had a little more revenue come in from grants, that's why you're seeing that it's not following the prior trend. Um, it went up a little bit, which was, which was good news, we had to change some staffing so we could, um, maximize all of our grant revenue. Um, I don't anticipate it following the purple line all the way up, though, I think we're still gonna end, um, lower than that at the four point nine. Um, there's still some unknowns, um, that are coming in, so, um, as far as grants and carryover, um, end of the year. Um, and then the next slide basically just gives the numbers that support that graph, so, um, just focusing on the far right, that's the increase and decrease in fund balance since two thousand eighteen. Um, as you can see, there's been some years where there's been significant decreases. Um, fiscal year twenty, um, you see an increase there, but that was when we had a large influx of stabilization funds because of our decreased enrollment, um, because of COVID, so, um, that was kind of like a band-aid for that year, it did help out. Um, but then you see our fund balance declining again each year, um, so the, the, the main point that I want to show is that we are over six million dollars less ending fund balance than we were in two thousand eighteen, projected for twenty-four. Okay. And then to just talk about some of the things that contribute to that declining fund balance, um, so you have a, you've heard this many times before, the state's not funding basically, um, fully. And in fact, there's been a lot of, um, recent news that the, um, percentage of the state budget that is dedicated to K-12 funding has declined also. So, um, to give an example of, um, not fully funding and how we have to use our local levy dollars to subsidize our, um, staffing, um, there's been comments made, um, about, about our, us not employing the same number of staff that the state allocates through the prototypical funding model. Um, and so I just wanna use an example of teachers, for example, we, we fund, uh, we're funded for approximately two hundred and seventy-eight teachers this school year. And we do employ less than that, um, by about fifteen to twenty staff, depending on what month in the year you're looking at. Um, but the cost of those staff is approximately three million dollars more than the state provides us in funding for those staff. So even though we are, we are hiring less staff than they fund us for, we're paying much more, and that money has to come out of our local levy dollars, we have no other way to pay for that. Um, and then just to go through the list, some other things that are impacting this is bargaining, enrollment declines, even though we're, we're on the rebound from COVID, um, the reduced enrollment over the last five, several years have hurt, has hurt our fund balance, um, and we're not sure, we, we don't know how to predict what's gonna happen in the future, so hopefully we'll stay on the rebound, but that's an unknown. Um, costs continue increasing, all of our fuel and supplies and foods, food and services. Um, higher costs for special education, um, it's projected at over three million dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, um, because our additional, um, costs aren't offset by the added revenues for additional enrollment, so, um, that has to also come out of our local levy dollars. Um, and then we've had, uh, the luxury of, uh, SRR state stabilization and other COVID grants over the past few years that are gone now, but a lot of those, um, needs for those funds, it still exists today, so, um, those are some examples. And now I wanna move on to, um, uh, this is just a heads up for the current year, um, I'm gonna be, um, presenting a budget extension at the August, um, uh, budget adoption meeting. So I wanted to just go over some of the numbers of where we're at from budget to, um, comparing budget to actual. So in revenues, we budgeted ninety-three point eight million, and we're currently at ninety-eight point nine million. And that is due to increased enrollment, so we have more enrollment, so we've received more funding, um, our special ed program, um, is also generating more funding. Um, our transportation ridership was much more than we anticipated, so, um, we received more revenue there, that's some of the main categories of the increased revenue. Um, expenditures, we budgeted ninety-five million, and we're a little over, projecting a little over a hundred. Um, so the, those were due to salary-related costs, um, because of additional enrollment, we hire more staff, um, we had a lot more overtime, um, overages for classroom, classroom coverage, um, substitute costs, um, cost of supplies, election fees, those are a lot of our additional expenditures that we didn't anticipate. So I'll be, um, asking for, as you can see, the budget extension amounts are right around five million for both revenues and expenditures, so it shouldn't have any impact to ending fund balance. So I'll be asking for a budget extension at the, um, August meeting. Is there any questions about that?
Yeah, you mentioned the state funding the number of positions. Why, can you explain why our costs are so much more than that, please?
Yeah, so, um, when, when the McCleary decision was passed, um, the state went to a statewide salary schedule, um, and every individual district was left to bargain their own salary schedules, so the state only funds a certain amount for each position. Um, but we pay a lot more than that, so they don't fully fund our staffing salaries and benefits.
Okay.
Okay, so, gonna move on to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget update. Um, I do wanna mention as a disclaimer that this is very preliminary, we're still, still doing some reconciliations, I can't talk about reconciliations of staff, um, and MSOCs. Um, we're looking at contracted versus employed, um, staff, because we are trying to hire, we're posting more positions to try to hire, um, contracted staff do cost more, so, um, so we're still reconciling things, but, but the preliminary, um, HR file and the MSOCs that we've projected, these numbers include the reductions that we've already made, that Chris already talked about, um, so that nine million dollars, um, is included in these numbers. So, um, as I said, that we're projecting to end at four point four million, so I started beginning fund balance at four point four. Um, revenues are projected at eighty-eight point five almost, and then expenditures and transfers, um, almost ninety-five million, so our ending projected fund balance is a negative one point nine million dollars. Um, so I wanted to go over where we really need to end and some, some things that we have to set aside. Um, we have restrictions on our fund balance, we have to set aside things for carryover, our inventory, our prepayments, things we pay for, for, um, this year that come out of next year's budget. Um, those are restricted, they're off limits, we can't use those for expenditures. Um, and then we also have our minimum fund balance policy at five percent. Um, so the next slide, go ahead, the next slide shows where I projected to end our fund balance. And then there is restricted fund balance, um, is estimated at about one point six billion. Minimum fund balance policy is at four points, little over four point seven million, so the projected budget deficit for twenty-four, twenty-five is eight point two million. Um, so there are still some unknowns in that, um, we have bargaining, um, as Chris mentioned, we have groups open right now, um, three groups, and we have, um, we don't know what's gonna happen with enrollment, um, and then we don't know what will happen in the legislative session, whether they'll provide more funding, um, increase the special ed cap, there's a lot of things they could do that could help us. Um, so those are some unknowns, um, but it shows how much more we need to cut in addition to what we've already identified. So did you wanna add anything to that, Chris?
Yeah, are you, you done?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Done, I told her, I'm done with her yet.
Yeah.
Good segue into.
I was hoping you were done, it was getting progressively worse.
Yeah.
Um.
Thank you.
Couple things that, that I've talked with you about since the beginning of the year, one, um, became pretty clear to me when I came here, um, that we were in a, a deficit model. Um, and part of that was because of the fact that we retained staffing that was previously funded through, uh, some of the SRR dollars and largely funded through the SRR dollars. There were some cuts made, um, last year, um, in the budget, but, uh, probably needed another three, three and a half, four million more in cuts. Um, just to be completely transparent, I've shared that with you, um, since I arrived. Um, so I can, I can guess that the thinking was the levy would have passed, and then this year would have made cuts to try to make up that three and a half million dollars. Well, the levy didn't pass, and so that just compounds the issue. And so that puts us to where we are now, um, which also means, as I've had conversations with each of you about the idea of Young Community Schools going into binding conditions with OSPI. Um, we have a meeting with them on August first, um, we've already been in communication with ESD, they are very, very involved. And OSPI, OSPI is already very involved, because, um, if we can't submit a balanced budget, then, um, we obviously are in a spot where, um, we can't operate as-is, and therefore, OSPI would step in, and we would enter binding conditions where we would have regular check-ins with them. Um, we would have to put a plan in place for how we are going to get to a balanced budget. Um, there are some requirements in year one, uh, where you're meeting regularly and talking about what is your plan to get there. Um, what it allows you to do is it allows you to, um, sometimes, uh, borrow. For example, you can borrow from Capital Projects, the problem is you have to pay it back with interest. And, um, so you're, uh, you know, uh, taking Peter to pay Paul, so eventually you have to pay it back, what do you pay it back with? So then when you get levy dollars, you pay that back, those levy dollars are already spent. Um, it does allow you to, um, to get, um, some of your apportionment earlier. Um, again, same scenario, you gotta pay it back. Um, so it is a situation, I think last year there were five or six districts in binding conditions in the state, we're gonna see more this year, and it's very likely that, uh, we will be one of them. Um, given the fact that we have an eight million dollar hole to dig out of on top of what we've already dug out of, um, we're not gonna be able to get that eight million, um, before we balance a budget in August, and so, um, it's, uh, pretty sobering, and, um, however, there is a mechanism, um, for our district to um, dig out of this and get back to, uh, a balanced budget and moving forward, but um, there are some pretty strict guidelines, and there's a lot of work that we're gonna have to do. What questions do you have? I know, again, I know we've had some conversations individually, um, not collectively, I'm gonna be sending you some information tomorrow in my update, um, specifically around um, binding conditions, what that definition means, what the, um, WAC specifically says about it, and also um, the most recent, uh, presentation from OSPI in May around, uh, that process.
I hate when it rains, it pours, but can you off the top of your head just ballpark figure what we get for, um, I know it's not a lot, it's dwindled over the years, from, uh, timber sales? Just, are we, you know, because to add fuel to the fire, they're trying to make the movement that they.
Right. It's not a lot, and there was actually, um, the county made a negative adjustment of ten thousand dollars last month, but it's only a few thousand.
Great, okay, that's another, if they, they cut it as far as all the different, I don't understand why, but I've given some information to to Chris to look at.
Yeah.
And say, we're already out of money, don't cut it more.
Is it physically possible to balance the budget and still stay within state mandates, laws, guidelines, CBA's? Is it physically possible?
Uh, for this coming year?
I was just gonna ask that question.
Uh, no. No.
Oh, I didn't, I, I didn't, I wanted to ask the question.
And we do some reconciliation, this, this number could get better, it could get a little bit better, but, I mean, it's eight point two million, it's not gonna get that much better, so.
If we have an idea on if we make every, every cut that we could make, better than everything, I'm not recommending that, but where we would end up?
Um, well, no, not until we cost out that whole list that you were looking at, um, so if we decide, for example, we're not gonna allow travel, that we're only gonna allow virtual conferences, we'll pay for registration for the opportunity, um, then we would know, but if we're, if we say we're just gonna eliminate certain travel, um, we'll allow travel that's paid for other grants, for example, it's harder to pin down the amount that we're gonna save.
Well, this was a pep talk. It didn't go over.
I'll do it to you next time.
I know it's been a lot of.
Yeah.
On you, I mean, it's just like.
I, I think the lesson in, in, um, Yale is not the only district. Um, but the lesson here is that, um, our district should have, uh, cut, um, to balance at least a year ago. Um, to reduce the expenditures that were previously funded through SRR funds, but then carried over to levy-funded and general-funded. And, um, many districts tried to maintain that staffing or a level of it, and it just financially is not possible. Um, as much as people would like to have some of the added positions, um, it just, it is not feasible, uh, to do, and, um, that should have been reduced, uh, last spring. Um, but then again, like I said, I think the thinking could have been, we'll pass the levy, and then we'll cut the three and a half million, um, you know, it's not fifteen, but it's three and a half that we can cut, a lot of that you can do through attrition and through some, um, some adjustments, they're not, you know, small, but they're adjustments. They're not, you know, small, but they're adjustments. Um, but obviously, the levy didn't happen. Um, that cut didn't happen last spring, and here we are.
Yeah, that cut had happened last spring and we saved three and a half million, would it have been possible to balance it this year or would we still?
If we were to pass the levy, it would have.
Without the levy, I'm talking again, without.
Yeah, just the levy deficit. We, we could have gotten to a place, it would have been really close, and get us into next year. We do have some funding coming in through the end of Da- December. However, um, that doesn't allow you to keep staffing and then cut them at the end of December. But it does allow a little bit of a cushion, uh, for that time period. But then from, um, January, uh, for the, the next, uh, calendar year, um, there's no funds in the following calendar year, depending upon what happens if we go out, um, in February for a vote. So, uh, we wouldn't necessarily, necessarily have had to go on to binding conditions. But that three and a half million was, um, uh, too big of a gap in addition to the levy failure.
But other districts that did pass the levy and did pay the same, they're making cuts, just not as deep as us.
Yeah, there are districts across the state, um, regardless of whether they pass their levy or not, are making, uh, cuts and some are very, very significant cuts, even when they passed, uh, a levy. And, and you've read about those and, uh, and seen about them on the news. It, it's just, it's where we are in public education, and so I'm very interested to see what happens this long session coming up. Um, there are going to be, uh, really three initiatives that go to them that are going to be, I think, pretty loud and clear from education, or special ed funding, uh, transportation, and then all those non-employee related costs that Jennifer talked about, um, that have gone through the roof, you know, the cost of insurance, um, and benefits, the cost of, uh, fuel, the cost of, um, really everything that we have to purchase has gone up, funding hasn't kept up with that. So those are the three areas that you're going to see, um, a strong push to try to increase. Because that in turn gives you money back into your general fund to use for other things, which you're currently using your general fund to cover those costs. So that's one of the reasons you're going to see, um, a lot of talk around those three things a session.
Any more questions?
I'm afraid. I don't want to ask you anything else. Very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I kind of hate to say it, but I think we are all going to have to get, as in the board, a little more going down and bending the legislature's ear.
The board.
You know, or at least our representatives.
We have over the years. It's just that the entire of the board, they want new, you know, citizens groups and that. Okay. Oh, are we done with financial reports? Yes. Now student enrollment. Now we have board comments. Um, making sure.
Mr. Bill.
Well, this is, I gotta say, this is one of our, the toughest year we've ever had. I think we'll come out of better, but, uh, the voters are getting what they voted for. Uh, other than that, looking forward to school starting and all sports starting up again, so. That's all I have, that's.
Casey.
Um, oh gosh, where do I start? So where we're sitting here isn't fun. We're, we're hurting people's lives. We're taking programs away from kids. We're trying our best up here to put the kids first, and that has come at the cost of some people's jobs, some people's salaries increasing. We apologize for that, but with the respect of putting the kids first, we're making the decisions we feel are right and have to be made. Um, with that being said, we're doing our best to make responsible decisions. We're trying to get as much information, as much costs, as much different, uh, scenarios played out so that we can make the right decisions, and that doesn't always happen over the course of a week. We need to get all the data, especially when you're talking about the magnitude of fifteen million dollars. Um, and I, I'm very irresponsible to be making any decisions any quicker than we've been making. Um, I think overall, what we've heard from the financial reports, and I think I've known this all along, and I hope people are seeing this, is that our entire system's broken. The state's funding mechanisms are broken. They don't give us enough money to fund their own requirements and mandates, and it forces districts to pass levies just to survive. And it sucks that we're in this position, but it's proving that we really can't survive without levy funds. So I think that's, that's all I've got to say. We're going to keep making the cuts that we have to make, but it doesn't sound like we're going to be able to get there either.
Hmm, thank you, Casey. Um, what'd you name Denise? People's called you Donna.
Oh, okay.
We have to have a laugh, guys. Laugh, let's hear it. Ashley laugh, smile.
Oh, well, because everybody's hungry. I've been working at the Rotary on Monday nights, stuffing bags, and, uh, they've been handing them out on Tuesdays. So. That's a fun thing. A lot of fun. And thanks for all those people that, there's one of our rotaries, Rotary back there, they kids. They have a good job, and it's fun. It's great.
I'm out of comments, so I'll turn it over to Superintendent Woods.
Uh, just a couple of quick things, given, um, the fact that even after that, we may stop somebody that wants to be a board member.
Well, I was trying to hurry it up because I kept watching the door, like maybe he was going to make an exit.
Yeah, um, uh, three things, real quick. Uh, number one, thank you for the, the amount of time and energy you've been putting into this, because I see, um, the conversations that you're having, uh, the time that we're spending together, um, the amount of time that you're digging into this outside of our meetings and outside of board meetings. So, um, thank you for, um, taking the time to, to do this as best we can, as Casey said. Um, two quick things. I told you I was approached by a financial institution, our community, Olympia Federal Savings, um, came to me, um, earlier, uh, I guess in the spring and had an idea once the levy, um, didn't pass, and, um, they wanted to explore the idea of creating an account at Olympia Federal Savings, and they said they would lead by saying, um, they calculated that they would have spent about five thousand dollars in levy funds. So what they want to do is put that in an account for Young Community Schools. And then what they're going to do is encourage other businesses and, uh, community members to do the same. Um, in lieu of, uh, not passing a levy, would people be willing to donate this account? I met with them and, uh, uh, they really felt like the best use of those funds would be our kids. And, um, I agree with them that, um, going back into, uh, maybe providing scholarships for families who are going to need it because they can't pay two hundred dollars at high school or a hundred dollars at middle school to participate. Um, maybe we can use it to, um, try to restore some of our programs that we're going to end up cutting. Um, but they felt pretty strongly that those funds could be used towards, um, students, uh, on athletics and activities. And I think that's a great idea. And so what they would do then, uh, I'll be working with Jennifer and with them on specifically how that would work. But essentially what would happen is they would, uh, make a donation to A S B, um, frequently as we requested for specific things. And then we would want to make sure that we're being very open and transparent about what that dollar amount is going towards. And, um, so anyhow, anyhow, they're also talking about, um, they do an August penny drive, and that they want to, um, uh, identify Young Community Schools as a recipient of that penny drive. They said that tends to bring in about twenty five hundred dollars, so they would add that to it. Um, and then we're going to collectively go out to the community and see if there are other businesses and organizations that would like to do the same. Um, it, it's, it's not a ton, but, um, I commend O L E Fed for, uh, thinking about the idea, thinking about our kids and our students and our community. And so, uh, I met with them yesterday, so we're getting, moving on, uh, the initial steps to make that happen. Um, then last thing real quick is, uh, August fifteenth, we have board reports. Um, that's an all-day, uh, event starting at eight A M, hearing from district office departments. And then we move into high school, middle school, elementary, each building presents. And then, um, end the day with, uh, business and finance department. Um, that's eight to three thirty commitment. Let us know if, um, let Debbie know if you're not going to be able to make that. Um, but.
Sad again, Chris.
August fifteenth. That's in lieu of the typical board meeting. We moved it from the eighth to the fifteenth as a reminder, uh, because administrators, uh, have encouraged them to take some of their furlough days that first week in August. So then, um, what it would have been is they would have come back on the fifth and turn around on the eighth and do the, the board reports. So we moved it to the next week, which then moves the board meeting, um, after that to, I believe, the twenty ninth.
Yeah.
So, um, that's all I've got, and we can move on to, uh, number fourteen.
Hey, thank you. Um, now we're going to have the interview applicant for school board director vacancy. The door is still here. Um, and I'm, oh. I'm not going to, that's after the interview.
Yeah.
So where are, are, you're going to introduce?
So we have, um, yeah, we had, uh, two applicants. Uh, and as, um, they spoke with Debbie in the application process, only one of them actually lived in District One. And, uh, so Frank is here this evening, has sat through a lengthy board meeting, and, um, uh, is here to be interviewed this evening and to be considered for, uh, the District One vacancy. So, uh, you've got the questions. We'll ask Frank to come forward. And then, um, after we interview, uh, we'll recess to executive session, uh, to discuss the interview, and then for you guys to make a decision as we come out of executive session.
Can we take a couple minute breaks, like, the rest of the room, please?
Sure.
It's been two hours.
Is that okay? And we don't want, he can't start with. Oh, Bill.
Wait, make Frank wait.
Oh, thank you. I mean, he's only waited through the whole. We were going to put bars on the door so you couldn't escape, but we didn't. Have watch, have watch, everything.
So Frank, so you know, we'll have, um, we'll have six questions that we're going to go through. Um, since you're the only candidate, uh, the board has the option to ask follow-up questions. Typically, what would happen if there'd be multiple candidates, you want to make sure you ask the exact same questions to every, um, every applicant. And so, um, through these six questions, if they've got follow-up questions on any of your responses, they may ask that. Uh, but after we're done, uh, we recess, and then, uh, the board discusses, uh, the interview. We return, and then they make a motion, uh, for a decision. Um, if they make a motion to, uh, appoint you District One board member, um, right at that time, we swear you in, and then you're officially a board member, um, and then you would, uh, join us for the next board meeting. If they choose not to select you, um, then they would talk about next steps. So, uh, hopefully that helps with the process, um, so you know kind of what to expect.
Okay.
As soon as Bill gets back, we'll get started.
We just spoke kind of earlier. Right? Uh, oh, can you do names on the questions where they would ask?
Yeah, I mean, really easy, Frank.
Got it. Okay, I'm going to start off. Frank, please take this time to tell us about yourself and why you are interested and fall by for this appointment.
Um, for those of you that don't know me, uh, my name's Frank, last name King. Uh, I graduated Young High School two thousand and four, um, lived in District One thirty of those thirty-eight years. Um, wife and I moved out of the district for a couple of those years, and then we moved back to the district about four years ago. Um, also a Young graduate herself. Um, she is an educator, um, in the North Thurston Public Schools. We have three kids, two of them do attend Southworth, the oldest will be going to middle school next year, and then our youngest, um, won't be doing kindergarten readiness just yet in the Young School District, will be in Thurston next year. And, uh, it just gives me the opportunity to, Young was such a paramount in my, uh, community, um, growing up, that I just wanted to be able to get back to the community in any way. And my profession allows me to do that. I'm a small business owner, family business, and just really want to get back to the community. But I saw this being a good fit for that.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a non-paid position that will require attending board meetings at least twice a month, training sessions and conferences, school visitations, reading board materials and publications, participating in committee work, working on levy and bond campaigns and other assignments by the board chair. Are you willing to make such a time and work commitment and why?
I am willing to make that commitment. Um, I sat through tonight's meeting, so that was a good commitment in and of itself. Even after the financial part, I was like, oh, go, what am I getting myself into? Um, but I was thinking if it's not me, then who? Um, in making that commitment, we all have twenty-four hours in our day. It's just how we choose to spend that time. Um, we can go and play at the park with our kids, invest that time, but a lot of times you see people at that park with their kids and they're on their phones, they're on social media and they're not engaged. And that's the biggest thing that I want to bring forward, especially my generation, younger generations, is being engaged into my children's education more than anything.
I gotta tell you, this is one of our longer meetings of the, in twenty years we've had, so. Okay, Frank, uh, can you please describe the strengths you can bring to this board?
The strengths that I can bring to the board is that I'm a good team player. I think that's key. I see that within you guys. You each hold your own opinions on matters, um, but you also vote, vote in unity in it. And that's a huge aspect that I think I could bring to the board. And just that honest integrity, putting my name out there, my business out there, is a lot to put on the line to have that honest integrity within. Being part of the board.
So Frank, as you can see, the board doesn't always have just easy decisions to make, and seems like there are a lot of people, thousands of people online that have opinions on how to make things possible. And yet somehow, you're the only applicant that's willing to put your name out there and take the time and we committed for that. Um, how would you go about making some of these difficult decisions in working with the board?
Like many of you, I like to have all the facts in front of me before I make a decision. It's hard to make a quality decision without all those facts. Um, so I do like to have all the facts in front of me, but sometimes you're not given all the facts or due to time, you're not given all that. Um, and you'd have to make the best decision in those moments, and sometimes those are hard decisions with the budget deficit of a year, year and a half ago. Sometimes you don't get to go on that family vacation. And that would have helped ease the pain going into these future budget deficits. And, you know, just making those decisions and then being able to reflect on those decisions, um, I think is huge. Once you make that decision, being able to reflect back on that decision, just because that decision is made, it's not over. Um, that way you can learn from, whether that's a failure or a positive, and be able to move forward from that.
All right. Frank, what role can a school board member play in improving the quality of education in Young?
I think just being an active member within the board towards the community is a huge aspect that the board member can bring. Um, before I even looked into the board, I didn't know who my representative in my district was. I was like, I wonder who this guy is, you know, started doing some research and had no idea what role the board played in that. Um, so as me being into the board, I want to make sure that I'm able to have a face for my constituents out there. I want them to be able to see me, see me at a sporting event, see me pick up my kids from school, drop them off at parent teacher conference. I want to make sure that it's known that as a board member, I'm going to be active within the education process for our children.
Thank you. So, do you have any questions or a final statement?
No, I just appreciate the opportunity that this brings. Um, it was, came about sooner than I was thinking in my head. I was like, oh, I'm going to start attending board meetings, kind of see what it's all about. Um, and then once Mark. And then once Mark stepped down, you know, sometimes you just have to say yes to some things and timing's not always on your time. And being just put into a situation, I don't think anybody wants to be put into the situation, but sometimes you just have to say yes, even if it's not the right timing. It's easy.
Okay, so now. Okay, so now the board will meet in executive session to review the qualifications of an applicant appointment to elective office as allowed by RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110. One H, the board will be in executive session for 20 minutes, so we will come back at 8:30. Did I get that right?
Yep.
And the board is expected to take further action following the executive session. We're gonna take action. Our decision. Do I have to start over, Danielle? Our decision was based on selecting a candidate who has demonstrated a strong commitment to Young Community Schools and a willingness to fulfill the responsibilities of Young Community Schools Board Member. This person who is Frank King will serve the students, staff, and families with honesty and integrity. Do I hear a motion?
I'm moving to appoint Frank King to our board number one. Oh, go ahead. We appoint Frank King to the Young School Board Director of District One until the November 2025 general election.
I said it.
Okay, good, we got this, so, okay, so now. I have to do a roll call vote. Uh, Bill Haas.
Yes.
Uh, Denise.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Debbie. Yes. So. You're appointed, welcome, right?
All right. You get to come up and we get to officially do the oath.
Now take pictures because your kids don't wanna see it.
And I'll go slow. So raise your right hand. I Frank King do solemnly swear or affirm.
I Frank King do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and the laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And discharge the duties of the Office of Young Community Schools.
And discharge the duties of the Office of Young Community Schools.
School Board Director, District Number One.
School Board District Director, Number One.
According to law, to the best of my ability.
According to law, to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
He needs to sit down while I adjourn the meeting.
You know what, he can have my chair.
Oh, there you go. Wanna shake your hand. Congratulations and thank you.
Great.
Yeah, well.
Congratulations.
Yeah, welcome.
Try it out, try it out. Yes.
So mine is, well, do I have to say when the next meeting is?
Yes.
Well, that's next month.
And any other comments?
Oh, right, any other comments?
I just, I think it's a pure blessing, thank you so much for stepping up when nobody else would. I think you are the right man for the job that you were required to work in Missouri.
And especially after you didn't vote out of this. He's gonna have other meetings, all of which would have been hard, so yes, thank you, thank you.
I'd just like to say welcome.
Yes.
And thank you for stepping up where nobody else wanted to.
Good.
Frank, I just wanna say also, thank you, we got to meet two weeks ago at 6:00 AM for coffee. And I really enjoyed our conversation and I knew, walking away from that meeting, that you were gonna immediately bring value to our board and be a great addition, so I look forward to working with you.
Okay, this is it, now this is it.
Yeah, leave.